Good evening. It is Monday, May 11th, 2020, and it's 7:00 PM. And I call to order the Speedway Town Council meeting for the month of May. Present, joining us for the meeting this evening via virtual video are council members Eileen Fisher, Councillor Gary Rakes.
Good evening.
And Vice President of our Council, Vince Noblet.
Good evening.
And joining me in Council chambers are Clerk Treasurer Jacob Blaisdell.
Good evening.
And our Town Attorney, Bob Clutter.
Howdy do.
We will follow the agenda which has been posted this evening. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Those here in the Council chambers, if you would stand, and we will proceed with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item two on our agenda is approval of our minutes from our April 13th council meeting. Those have been distributed to the council for review. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, those will be approved as presented. Item three on our agenda is approval of a date change for Run 317 for the race that was originally scheduled in May, the end of May. It's going to be moved to September 17th. The council's been given emails which I forwarded to them about this. I've been in email communication with the Director of the Race, and he's asked that this date be changed to September 11th, or I'm sorry, September 17th. They're still very interested in having this run for the town, and they have a lot of people that have signed up. So I guess for this, we just need a concurrence from the council. And we'll call, since we're doing a virtual meeting, I'll call for council by name. Councillor Fisher, do you concur?
Concur.
Councillor Rakes.
I concur.
Vice President Noblet.
I concur.
With their approval, the Run 317 will now be on September 17th. Item four on our agenda is approval of an opening for the Speedway Farmers Market on Main Street. And I've asked our Economic Development Director, Tim Gropp, to address this. As the property, the Farmers Market will be on is on SRC property. Tim?
Good evening, Council. We had intended, when we developed the lot at 1068 Main Street, right behind the War Memorial, next to Charlie Brown's last year, Farmers Market had moved around, and we felt that was a good spot. They had approached us about coming back to Main Street, and we allowed them to set up the Farmers Market on that lot last year, second half of the season last year. We had intended on approving that same setup for this year. We had it on our March agenda and that for the Redevelopment Commission, that meeting subsequently got canceled. And then we chose not to approve any new events until we had a clearer picture of when everything was going to get back to normal. We had intended to approve the use of that lot at our Redevelopment Commission meeting next week on the 18th. However, with Mayor Hogset's most recent executive order, he allowed Farmers Markets to open earlier than some of the other businesses. So with that, Carol Wellman, the Director of the market, reached out and asked if we could get appro, if they could get approval to run the market, starting as soon as possible. It's about a week ago. With everything COVID-19, part of the requirements are that any business or events operating has to have a plan in place. So we felt it prudent to have the, have the markets submit their plan for addressing COVID-19 concerns and how they're going to address vendors and safety of residents. While this isn't a town sanctioned market, they are using our property. So we wanted it to be reviewed by a governing body prior to giving consent to move forward. You all received their plan, which outlines a lot of the things you've been hearing about, masks being used, six feet separation, hand sanitizer. I did send the plan over to Chief Fishburne to review as well. There was one additional comment to, from Mr. Fishburne regarding access, if it gets overcrowded, being able to limit the entry points to one or two, or have a way to control the crowd. So people have to, if it gets really busy, people would have to wait until they can come into the market. So I took that comment back to Carol. She said they had considered that as well. And we're looking at ideas to manage that, but it was not officially incorporated into their plan as of yet. So we're looking for, in general, beyond that, Chief Fishburne, I believe, said that everything looked in line with the guidelines that have been proposed. And the concern from the Speedway Farmers Market was, the longer they wait, the more chance of vendors going to the other markets might be. So they wouldn't be available later in the season as well. So with that, we have received insurance information covering the Speedway Redevelopment Commission of the town as additionally insured on their insurance. We have received their, they have the proper permitting from Marion County Health Department. And then for your consideration for consent tonight is their plan to keep the public, citizens of Speedway safe as they visit this market.
Great, thank you. This will just take a concurrence from the council. Councillor Dan Jensen has joined us. Councillor Jensen, do you con, Jensen, do you concur?
Thank you.
Councillor Fisher?
Concur.
Councillor Rakes?
Yes, I agree.
And Vice President Noblet.
I concur.
Okay, thank you. Item five on our agenda is approval of claims and utility adjustments from our Clerk Treasurer. Jacob?
Thank you, Mr. President. Presented the claims covering April 11th through May 8th, and would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the claims as presented by the Clerk Treasurer. This is Gary Rakes speaking.
I second. This is Dan Jensen.
It's been a motion and a second to approve the claims as presented by our Clerk Treasurer. Any comments or questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. All those in favor of approving the claims as presented signify, oh, I'm sorry, we're back to virtual. I will ask each councillor if they approve or not approve. Councillor Jensen?
Approve.
Councillor Fisher?
Approve.
Councillor Rakes?
Approve.
And Vice President Noblet?
Approve.
Thank you. That passes five to zero. Jacob, utility adjustments?
Utility adjustments have been presented for the same period, which is April 11th through May 8th. There is one, that is of some material, and it was a leak in someone's house. And so that's just a sewer adjustment. I would appreciate your approval.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the adjustments presented by Clerk Treasurer.
A second. Mr. Gary?
It's been a motion and a second to approve the utility adjustments as presented. Any questions from the council? Hearing none, we'll then call for the vote. Councillor Jensen, approve or not approve?
Approve.
Councillor Fisher?
Approve.
Councillor Rakes?
Approve.
And Vice President Noblet?
Approve.
And Jacob, anything else?
Just mentioned that Town Hall is currently still closed to the public, but we are looking at ways to reopen, looking at June 1st, which is a Monday, to kind of start reopening. It will be per state guidelines on an appointment-only basis. So we will have people calling in if they want to make an appointment. And of course, if people do come in, we'll be asking them to wear a mask, bring your own riding utensil. We will be doing a quick temperatures check-in as people come in. And then I think it goes without saying that if you're experiencing symptoms, we will not want you to come into Town Hall. But we are looking at doing that and kind of getting the right protocols in place to do that safely. And I'll also add, I mean, if there's been a silver lining of this entire process, it's that we've found ways to do pretty much any transaction online or the phone. The team at Town Hall has been able to make adjustments and modify on the fly. So, and for a lot of people, that's been a lot more convenient, that you don't need to come into Town Hall to get a permit or pay your bill. So we ask people to continue doing that as much as possible. But like I said, we do hope to reopen for in-person meetings by appointment basis only. And then I also learned today that primary elections, which are going to be held June 1st, Town Hall will not be a location for voting in the primary elections. And actually, there will only be 22 sites across Marion County. And none of those are actually within the town limits of Speedway. Two that are close, one is the IPS Ernie Pyle School 90, which is kind of on the east, east of town of Speedway. So you take 16th Street, and then I believe it's Tibbs. It's just north on Tibbs. And then the other that's close to town is North Wayne School, which is up on 34th Street. If you take High School Road, take a left on 34th, go over the bridge, it goes over 465. And it's kind of that direction. And then if you're not familiar with either of those, Cranut Park Community Center will also be a voting center. But again, that's just for the in-person voting. A lot of people, everybody who's a registered voter should have received something in the mail asking if they can vote by mail. So we encourage folks to do that. But there are going to be limited sites. And I should also explain that anybody who's a registered voter can vote at any of the sites across Marion County. I've just mentioned the couple that are close to town. And that's all I have.
Great. And that is Tuesday, the 2nd.
Tuesday, June 2nd.
Correct. Okay, great. Thank you. Next, a report from department supervisors. We will begin with our Public Works, and Norm Berry is with us this evening. Mr. Berry?
Evening, everyone. Good evening as well. Okay, we'll begin with the Water Department. Luke wanted to report that the surface water plant is back online today. They will begin accordingly water quality samples this week, which are required by ID. Starting tomorrow, May 12th through May the 14th, they will have three crews out flushing hydrants throughout town from 8:30 PM to 12:00 AM. Flushing hydrants not only helps up, gauge our fire flow capacity, but it also helps flush out any rust or sediment from the water, along with maintaining proper chlorine concentration within the system. They will be using the GIS system to log in any maintenance the hydrants may require as well. And after they flush the hydrants, they will be serviced and painted. At the Street Department, Rob reports that the yard waste program is ongoing. They will be picking up trash on Main Street and the common areas, continue to mowing and weed eating, and patching the dreaded problems. The wastewater department, wastewater treatment plant, it's business as usual. We treat the water that can pollute the environment, and we reclaim it so it can be safely released to you. In April, we reclaimed 135 million gallons. Finally, the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, in a joint effort with the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, have provided 70,000 washable cloth face masks to be redistributed to all water and wastewater utilities in Indiana. We're going to take advantage of that opportunity, and we want to thank FEMA and EPA for providing them, as well as the City of Carmel, who has volunteered to distribute them. Each employee will be allowed five masks, and we will have 25 employees receive a license. We have to finish our report.
Thank you, Norm. Next is our Parks and Recreation Director, Tammy Smith.
Good evening. Well, this week's report is, most people have already heard that we've had to cancel our summer camps, as well as our swim lessons. So that is sad and disappointing news, but it was inevitable, and we had no choice. The schools are closed until at least June 30th. And since we utilize the school's facilities for both camps and lessons, we're just unable to get in there. Also, the CDC has come out with specific guidelines for aquatics and summer camps. And so that was another reason we made the decision that we did versus rescheduling them. We do hope to offer some alternate modified summer camps, possibly in the parks later in the summer, possibly July. We already had some camps in the parks scheduled for July, and we have kept those on the calendar. So one of those is the horseshoe, there's a horseshoe camp, cornhole camp, a stronger kids. And then I haven't confirmed this with Chief Fishburne, but we did have the firefighter four-day camp scheduled in July as well. So hopefully, we'll be able to keep those on there, as well as add a few more camp ideas to the summer. We do have a virtual program. We started last Friday called Speedway's Got Talent. So if you haven't already checked that Facebook page out, go and check that out. If you, we want to see a lot of people with some special talents post on there. We've already got our first performer posted, so go check her out. She's phenomenal. Tomorrow, I'll be attending a virtual meeting with IPRA regarding festivals and concerts. So we did have to cancel all of our June concerts, but we are hoping to get a few concerts in in July or, and/or August. So I should get some more information regarding that tomorrow. And then our Parks Board meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 19th, at 7:00 PM, and we will be doing that meeting via Zoom. So if anyone's interested in participating or being a part of that or watching it, they can email me at tsmith@speedwayin.gov. And other than that, I'm working with Mike and Rob to get the, hopefully get the playgrounds ready to open, the bathrooms and all that. According to the governor's guidelines, the earliest we can do that is May 24th. We're hoping to be able to hit that date, but there's protocols we have to get in place before we can actually open. So we will keep everybody posted, but we're working hard to get that done. And with that, that's all I got.
Thank you, Tammy. Next is our Fire Chief, Bob Fishburne.
Good evening, Council and Speedway. I don't have a lot to report, but I do want to comment on a few things. We're getting a lot of phone calls, and I've actually talked with Councilman Rakes about it. We, we don't have any way to capture just statistics for the town of Speedway. We can certainly do Marion County as far as the COVID-19 has gone in Speedway, because our ZIP code is shared with other people. And so looking at that is difficult. But you can go on the, the State Department of Health website, and you can get county-by-county results. We just haven't, cities and towns don't have a way to just gather that information unless they have an EOC that was set up specifically for their town. I also want to commend Luke Adams at the Water Department. I know it's something that we have always wanted the Water Department to do, get on the GIS system as they're maintaining and pressure testing the hydrants. And we are really, really excited about the fact that that information's going to be reachable for us. It will help the town's ISO rating, which will also be good for our corporate partners. And, you know, the insurance rating is important for us, and it's so much more than just the Fire Department. So I want to commend him on getting that program going, and not just testing them, but maintaining them. And he's going to paint as many as he can, and that's, that's commendable. Other than that, we, we are still doing daily EOC meetings, although we're starting to see that wind down. The Emergency Operations Center for Marion County is not staffing, full staffing on the weekends now, as we start to wind, you know, down to the May 15th. On May 15th, we're going to personally evaluate some of the things we're doing as far as our firefighters' ability to trade time and our overtime policy. But we will still keep the protocols in place with temperatures and the screening questions. Anybody, any other department heads or anybody that needs help getting that set up can reach out. But I think everybody's doing a really good job. And as I close, I want to thank all of the healthcare workers, the doctors and nurses that live here in Speedway, that are going to work on the front lines and battling this virus. And I want to encourage the people of Speedway to continue to be vigilant and not let your guard down. We have a lot of elderly in our community, and we need, even if we see them out, to use good judgment in communicating and social distancing with them, to keep them safe, because it's good for them to get out and walk. But we do need to continue to be careful with that part of our community. So that concludes my report. Are there any questions? Okay, thank you.
Appreciate it. Next is our Police Chief, Jim Campbell, alive and in person tonight.
Good evening. I'll begin my report by saying that the department continues to provide police services. You know, we, as you know, have kind of changed some of our operation, and we kind of intend to stay that way until there's some idea of the clearance of where do we go from here. So, secondly, there, we currently have a hiring process. I think I mentioned that last time. But to kind of report that, we have 140 applicants to date. And it doesn't close till May 20th. So we feel pretty good about the possibility of filling two vacancies. So, and our, and our commissioners have approved lateral entry, which for those who don't know what that really means, we will look at officers coming from other departments. You know, again, preference two to five years, but they, you know, they would not require going to ILEA, which saves us money and experience. So. The other one is Gleaner's Food Bank on May 23rd will be, will be performing a, well, they will be there to provide food services to people coming into the track. You know, we, we'll work with IMS, you know, traffic and issues that might arise at the track. The, I think everybody by this point knows that the Speedway High School graduation, we've met and think we have a plan for providing an escort over to the track. And it sounds like a really neat program that's been set up. The, you know, the last one, believe it or not, we are going to hold a public safety meeting, if we're allowed to do so. That'll be June 9th at 1:00. That's a public meeting. Prior to that, we have law enforcement meetings. That's my report.
Thank you, Chief. Any questions for the Chief? Thanks, Chief. Appreciate it. Next is our Economic Development Director, Tim Gropp.
Good evening, Council. Real quick on 2500 High School Road, Founder Square, a lot of progress is being made. You might recall, they found the old I-74 going through that had not been removed, that has subsequently been uncovered, crushed, and stockpiled. They are currently working on crushing all that concrete, making it into usable material. Atlas, excavating, the contractor seems really pleased with the product that's being made out of that. For an unknown situation that was unexpected, it's been resolved pretty well at a minimal additional cost. So we're thankful for that. In the meantime, they continue to do a lot of utility relocate work out there. Multiple users that feed that cell tower, IPL's continuing to relocate the power lines, and we'll be pulling the power poles here really shortly. Comcast is moving their, their wires off there as well. AT&amp;T's about finished, and ZAO is also working out there. So we have a lot of coordination between utilities. And then Atlas, while they're waiting on the crushed stone, crushed concrete, is working on installing the new storm and wastewater pipes. And so progress is being made. All the, all the infrastructure needed for the new intersection at 25th and High School has been ordered. I believe the poles are in powder coating now. So we hopefully anticipate that intersection starting here in the next couple of weeks. And I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, that Crawfordsville Road has been restriped, and the new, I'm seeing thumbs up over there. So the dedicated turn lane has been completed, so you can go north, north off of Crawfordsville Road West, and dedicated to learn turn lane now. So that, that was a much-needed improvement, and thank Indianapolis for getting that done in the spring. Beyond that, the fence is about to be installed at 10th and Polco. So we're keeping an eye, I've asked them to let me know exactly the date. There's still a little bit of grading that needs to be done to finish that project off. Be in communications with Norm at Wastewater, Stormwater, and John Merritt, and hopefully that fencing will be done soon. And that will be the completion of that project at this point, then possibly some reseeding in the spring. So that's good that that's coming to a conclusion. We've been working on that for several years. And also, the Gilman Street Project, Abel Motorsports, that building's very close to being completed. I spoke to their broker this week, late last week, actually, and they don't anticipate much space being available once that's closed, but they're working on some lease deals. And we'll let everybody know when those get completed, and we'll let you know when the move-in date is. So hopefully, when we all get back together, we can go out and have a nice ribbon cutting on a new building in Speedway.
Any questions for Tim? Thank you, Tim. Next is a report from our council members. First, we will begin with Councillor Dan Jensen.
I would just like to reiterate what Chief Fishburne said, and thanks to all our healthcare workers and everybody who's come on the front lines and putting themselves at an increased risk of infection and harm. And I know the sacrifices a lot of those people have made. So I just want to thank those people. And I know probably a lot of people are dealing with discouragement about events and activities. I just want to encourage people, this, we'll get through this, and things will go back to normal. It'll be a new normal, but things will get better. So keep your chin up as much as you can, be kind to one another. I'm excited for what the future of Speedway looks like. So I just want to thank our employees and, you know, everybody who's done such a wonderful job.
Thank you, Dan. Next is Councillor Eileen Fisher.
I agree with what Dan said, because it is frustrating times, and every day brings us something new. And we just have to take that as a challenge, know that we can defeat it together as a team. And I think all of our staff members are doing exactly that. So thank you to you guys and your team members out there. You're in the line front of everything as well. And so just stay safe, and definitely think of others while out there, and we'll all get through this. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Next is Councillor Gary Rakes.
Good evening, everyone. And I'll try and keep my, some of my comments as brief as possible. I think Dan and Eileen hit on some of the same ones that I was going to say. But I certainly want to say thank you to everyone who has worked hard, both on our employees, as well as just residents around town, that's either serve directly or maybe just serving indirectly, like their neighbors, or people on their block, et cetera. There's food pantries, all kinds, you know, churches in town, as well as surrounding our town. Folks are volunteering and helping wherever they can. So thank you to everyone. Second, I want to Second, I want to reiterate some of what Chief Fishburne was saying about using a caution when, when the economy and, we get back on track to use the governor's five-stage plan. I think we need to use caution. And each of us as individuals need to look at our own lives and what we can do to be safe and to help others to be that way. Just as Chief Fishburne was describing, if we see elderly folks, whether it's at parks, or in a retail setting, or anywhere it might be, just be wise about our distance. But I think, at the end of the day, it's important for each of us to be smart about our own care first, and our parents, or the older brothers and sisters, any family members, aunts and uncles that are either in an age group, or just a health risk group that causes them to be at risk. We have to protect them, and keep encouraging and advising them to do, to be smart. I think also encouraging them any way we can, because in many cases, don't make light of that, actually take it seriously and do what you can to help your neighbors and family members and friends. Finally, I want to talk a little bit about questions that I get from various folks around town about the Indy 500 and other events at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway. There was a wonderful article, interview yesterday in the Indianapolis Star. And if you've not seen it, I would encourage you to check it out. It was an interview of Doug Bowles, president of Indianapolis Motor Speedway. And he basically reflected on their, their goals as it relates to the NASCAR event in early July, as well as the Indy 500 that'll be run in August, and the different scenarios that they have for trying to make all those things happen. So if you're interested in that, that'd be a great place to check it. That's the kind of information we're getting regularly and in communication with Indianapolis Motor Speedway, as well as other groups that want to be in our town. And I think it's worth your while to check that out. So with that, I just wish everyone well, and encourage everyone to continue to stay safe, and thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next is Vice President of our council, Vince Noblet.
Good evening. I just want to let everyone know that we need to continue to support our businesses in Speedway. These guys have financially put a lot on the line, and it's very important that this town supports them. Continue with the to-go orders. And as we transition to in-house service, I mean, they're going to be working at 50% of capacity, but let's, let's support them. And we've got a lot of great businesses in town, a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of their hard-earned money at stake here. And I think it's great that the town is supportive. I personally can't believe how busy Mug and Bond has been over the past couple of months. I mean, the place has just been loaded with customers. And I also appreciate all the pickup orders that are taking place around town. I mean, these are lifelines for the business. I mean, not only are they, are facing the economic new realities of trying to get a dollar to spread further, but now food shortages, you know, they're running into that with just the national chains cutting back. So they are facing a lot, and we need to support them as a town. And I know we will, as a town, support our small business. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Finally, is my report. Just a couple of things I'd like to mention this evening. Tomorrow, May the 12th, around 2:00 PM, the United States Navy Blue Angels are scheduling a flyover through the city, and that is going to come over the town. I believe it starts at 2:00. So we'll be looking to the sky around 2:00 for that. Should be exciting to watch. And then also, our Arts Council has started a contest in town called Still May in Speedway, where you decorate your house, with it still being the month of May, to celebrate the month of May. For information on that, please visit the town's Facebook, or I believe it's on the Facebook and Twitter. Follow that. And then I wanted to address the stay-at-home order that is still in effect through the end of this week. That is under the direction of the Marion County Health Department, which we follow their guidelines and their recommendations, which also comes through the mayor's office. The mayor's office for the city has reached out to me today, said that they are reviewing that, and they will have an announcement towards the end of this week as to whether that is extended, or it's lifted, or we go into the next phase. So be sure to follow the town's Facebook, Twitter, or website, and we will have that, that information for you. And I believe that has covered everything. Thank everyone for attending. I'd like to thank Brian. I know the sound here at the council's kind of hard for us to talk. I keep hearing myself. But he's given a hard job to do, and I think he's done a great job at it this evening. So Brian, thank you. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting at 7:35.